I'm going to move Brockton Cable to a panelist. And then I'm going to move Brockton Cable to a co-host. So that they can record. All right. We have. We have Quorum. So, Madam Chair, when you are ready.
Good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez. This is the planning board meeting for October 5th. Just a quick announcement. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter 38, section 20, real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application. This application will allow users to review the meeting and send a comment or questions to the chair via the question and answer function submitted. Text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joined by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpage. All votes we've done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. Mr. May, do you just want me to review the agenda? Now that we are.
Yes, please.
Okay, so tonight, we have just three board members. Larry Hassan.
Here.
James Weenie.
Here.
We also have Fire Chief Williams. And you know, Rob May, the Director of the Planning Department. We are short one board member, so we unfortunately are not going to be able to hear two. Items on the agenda. So if anyone is here for the return to ZBA for property 134 Armiston Street, we are unable to vote on that with short board members. And also for permission to return to ZBA for 3355 Westgate Drive. So if anybody is attendance for those two, they will not be heard.
Apologize for that, but state law has us. In a bind that we have to have a certain number of members present in order to hear a return to ZBA case. So again, apologies.
We do have on the agenda definitive subdivision property 53 Cypress Drive. Lots for applicant George Heikel, George ASAC, Representative ET Engineering. Okay, did we have any other business before we get into that?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, we do have a couple of things. There are no new A and R or lot releases before you. However, next on our agenda, we have a presentation by the city of a master plan that we are preparing for the Lovett Brook. Or the Brockton Heights area of Brockton. So this is the area around Good Samaritan Hospital. We are working with a grant from Mass Development called a site readiness grant. And that is helping us to analyze the market. Potential, pardon me, for the redevelopment around the hospital area. If you drive by Good Samaritan Medical Center, you'll notice that there is a lot of vacant property or underutilized property. And we're hoping to take advantage of that because of its proximity to the highway to see some redevelopment in that area. And we were encouraged by some work that we have been doing with MIT and the Mass Life Science Center to. Evaluate the potential for life science. Development in the area. So that's creating some higher wage, higher skilled jobs and other interesting amenities in the area. So. I would like to introduce Emily Ennis of Ennis and Associates, who is our consultant working with us. And we have a rather large project advisory committee that represents some of the landowners and residents and. Business owners in the area, but. We have been working towards a, our first public meeting, which is October 14th. It also will be on Zoom. And we'll be discussing the plan in more detail. This is kind of a sneak peek of that plan. We wanted to get the planning board up to date. I should say that as part of this presentation. Because we're in advance of the public meeting, we are going to take written comments in the Q and A. From the public at large and hopefully we'll be able to answer those questions out the 14th. But we will be taking board questions. Live and hopefully we'll be able to answer those for you. So Emily, let me hand this over to you now.
Great, thank you very much, Rob. Good evening, planning board members. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. I'm going to share my screen in a minute, but I just want to emphasize that where we are is in the middle of this process. We've been doing a lot of background research. I'll touch on some of that tonight. We've been communicating with the project advisory committee that Rob mentioned earlier. And we have tonight to show some scenarios that we're talking about. Just to illustrate what could happen on the property. They are not development projects. This is not a final plan. What we're really looking for on October 14th is input into some of the things that we're looking at. So I'm going to share my screen with your permission. And just show you where we are and what we've been talking about and looking forward to some of your questions. So as Rob mentioned, this is the Lovett Brook Brockton Heights area. I'll show you in a minute or two what the plan looks like. He talked a lot about who's involved in this conversation, but just to say that in addition to myself on the consultant team. We also have RKG Associates and Ty and Bond. RKG is working on the market analysis and when we get to. A scenario development program will be helping us with the pro forma for that. Ty and Bond is looking at the environmental, the traffic, which has been a source of public comment. In terms of the survey responses that we received and other components of the development. In addition, Halversen, which is a Ty and Bond studio. Has been doing a lot of the landscape architecture and graphics work on this. In terms of existing conditions, as Rob mentioned, we started with a project that MIT had done on life sciences in Brockton as a whole. Because of the location of Good Samaritan Medical Center on the site, started to extrapolate information from that project. Which went over several presentations to the city of Brockton. They also looked at the city of Worcester, started extrapolating that into what could happen on this site. As part of that, we did a lot of work. Our, my colleagues at RKG Associates, Eric Halversen and Brian Gridley. On the market demand, not just in Brockton, but in this specific area. Yes.
Can I stop you for just one second? Moment. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier. Because the two return to ZBA cases, which is Armiston and Westgate Mall. Or Westgate Drive, we will not be able to hear those. We are continuing those to Tuesday, November 5th. Which is our next date and that information will be in the meeting minutes. Which will type back up again when Pam comes in, comes back. Apologize again for that. Those two cases will be continued to the 5th. Thank you.
Not a problem at all. These things are important. So the market analysis delved deeply first into the life sciences and then into, and particularly in bio manufacturing and other medical manufacturing. We also took a look at some associated manufacturing and then of course, housing demand, office demand, retail demand. One of the things that you'll see from the site is the variety of uses on here. In terms of life sciences, Brockton has a strength in the healthcare industry already. And that's not just its hospitals, but also the STEM program at Brockton High School, which I believe is the second most prominent in the state. And so you know, there's a talent pool that we're looking at. In looking at life sciences across Massachusetts, across the board, obviously you see R and D and lab very much in the Boston area and is expanding. To the west and to the north of Boston, as is associated such as manufacturing. You're not seeing as much in the southeast. I was on a conference call recently with Bankard Tradesman, listening in to some regional experts discussing this. And all of the discussion was the south, or sorry, the west and the north. And so we really see an opportunity for Brockton to become a regional leader. But that's going to require partnerships with educational institutions. It's going to require marketing this site and the opportunities to brokers. And really showing them and to companies what this site could be. And then finally, this idea that Brockton already has a number of assets in this area that could be leveraged. When you get to see the full report, which we will, we'll talk about that in the next steps, you'll see that the projections based on previous trends. Don't show this picture and that's because. Life sciences is relatively new, especially in the southeast corridor. And so the projections that we see are based on past trends and the extrapolation of those past trends rather than a proactive future marketing opportunity. So let me introduce the site to you in terms of the existing conditions, having talked a little bit about the high level. You see Oak Street here. This is Route 24. I'm hoping you can see my cursor. This is Route 27 coming on to North Pearl Street and then connecting it Oak Street Extension. The colors, and we'll talk about those a little bit more when we talk about the development, but they show the mix of uses on the site. We have. A lot of retail and restaurant here. The yellow are scattered, single-family houses. The purple, the medical center, Good Samaritan Medical Center and associated medical offices. And the blue is Harbor One Bank. And finally, the white is a small church here. It's interesting looking at this. We have in some of the materials that we prepared for briefing packages. The original plans from the 1930s of what this site would have looked like. And in fact, Oak Street came all the way down here. There were a lot of cross streets here, obviously 24 and 27 didn't exist. So the parcelization, which we'll talk about a little bit, is very different from what you might see in some of the other more regularly parceled areas of the city. In addition to that, we also, I'm showing a selection here, but we looked at environmental considerations, both in terms of Lovett Brook. Actually, let me just call it back. This is Lovett Brook right here. So it bisects the site and has some associated wetlands. It's mostly channelized. There's a culvert down here. And it actually runs underneath this building here, which has a laundromat and a 7-Eleven in it. So we looked at the environmental considerations of the Brook and also were there any hazardous releases on the site? We took a look at impervious or paved surfaces. What that might mean in terms of the health of the Brook, in terms of stormwater management. The surrounding environmental justice communities, demographics for the area, both in terms of residents and workforce. And also traffic, transportation, circulation. And in addition to this sort of quantitative existing conditions analysis. We've had since May or late May, early June, we've had two or three surveys on the website, one for residents of the area. One for employees of the area and one for businesses of the area. And those are still open. And we're hoping that people are, and we'd see that people are continuing to make comments on those. So. For anyone listening in who fits into those three categories, we would welcome your comments. So I mentioned that we're looking at scenarios. What we're trying to do is take, okay, given the existing conditions on the site, given the uses on the site, given the market demand, given the market that we see in the future, what the potential is. What could fit on this site? So what you're going to see in a few minutes is those working scenarios of how we see. The possibility of development over a five to 20-year or even more periods. So. Again, I want to stress that these are conceptual scenarios. They are not projects. They're certainly not going to happen anytime in the near future. But they're a way for us to get additional public comment. So in terms of the existing land uses, as I mentioned, restaurant and retail, medical office, the single-family pieces, office and church. There's also the footprint of former movie theater onsite and that will, that will become important later on. As we think about the possible scenarios, we've got, the first two are phased scenarios. So you'll see one A and one B. One A is something that could happen in the next three to five years maybe. And we're looking at. Some sort of bio manufacturing here, office lab here, potentially supporting what's going on at Good Samaritan Medical Center. Here where we currently have single-family homes, we could see a market for mixed-use development. That mixed-use development could potentially have retail and restaurant on the ground floor. And residences above, there's quite a bit of multifamily across the street. The amount of retail and residential in here, at least some of that could fit onto the mixed-use site on that ground floor. So there'd be a way for businesses who wanted to, to move into a new building. If you're looking at something phased like that and say a three to five-year period, maybe a little bit longer, giving permitting needs. In a 10 to 20-year period or 10 to 15-year period, you could move those businesses into separate restaurant pads. There's currently three businesses, three restaurants in this overall area now. And the remainder into a mixed use. You could see the mixed use in 10 to 15 years. Expanding along there and adding additional manufacturing. These two buildings here are gas stations and we don't. In this scenario, you don't necessarily see those changing in 10 to 15 years. And again, these are options for discussion. The other thing that we could see happening is as these buildings are shifting around, you'll note that. That allows, for example, Lovett Brook to be opened up where it's currently existing under the two businesses in that building here. By opening it up, that allows the restaurants to move over and have outdoor dining, which has been hugely popular in the pandemic. To be right on a, on the Brook that has been revitalized with walking paths in through this area. And now again. Conceptual, but what we're trying to do is imagine the amenities that could be on the site to support not just mixed-use residential here. But also the existing multifamily, the existing businesses here and future businesses here. In other words. Creating something that's an attractive amenity for a residential neighborhood, as well as attractive for new employees and employers in the area. So one A and one B you see as, as moving sort of forward over a multi-year period. The next two scenarios I'm going to show are alternatives for almost a full build out. The likelihood is something like that wouldn't happen within, say, the next 20 years, maybe the next 15 to 20, maybe beyond that. A lot of that is very determined by market conditions. But what we're trying to do at this point is get a sense of the maximum developments that could fit on the site. And the components such as the parking, the layout of any improvements, not just to the interior of the site. But in our work over the last week, we've been looking at improvements beyond the site. How would those all work together? And critically, given some of the feedback we've heard on the surveys, what would that level of development do to the traffic as it exists today? So scenario two, you can see the restaurant pad shift a little bit. The manufacturing stays in this corner. A little bit more mixed use and then starting to add office up in this area here. You see that again in scenario three with even more office up here, a little bit reorganized manufacturing, different manufacturing types here. Again, this is an exercise to see if this level of development volume were to happen onsite. What would that allow us to do for the public amenities and what would that allow us to do in terms of traffic improvements on here? Right now, we're holding that all the same. Currently, team members are working on what the different development scenarios do in terms of the different improvements. We hope to show that in much more detail on October 14th. And then finally, just as a high-level overview in terms of implementation, we are looking at this as an urban renewal plan. The downtown, the Troutbrook area already have urban renewal plans. We're looking at a similar sort of piece. To allow for the public infrastructure improvements to happen to support the private development again, over at least a 20-year period. This, I mentioned the footpad of the original movie theater, which is right about here in this picture. You can see there's an awful lot of parking. An awful lot of impervious surface, not much development. There's a little strip of. Restaurant and retail along here. This is the building, the front of this is Frank's here. The car wash is over here, Prestige Car Wash is down here. And then you see a lot of technical terminology about blighted open area. This is state legislation. But really it talks about a substantial change in business or economic conditions that it's unduly costly for the private market to intervene. Or an abandonment or cessation of a previous use. And all of these would really apply to this lot. I'll show you where it is in a minute. You can see here, the parcelization, I mentioned how chopped up it is. Newland Avenue and Lyndale Avenue, for example, are paper streets. They were never actually fully developed. And so all of these housing lots have no frontage onto an actual public street. In terms of Oak Street, it was pretty much abandoned. It gives access to the single-family home here and the back of the footprint of the theater. But you can see when I show you this yellow parcel here is the parcel of the theater. This used to be in common ownership that changed relatively recently. This was sold to another owner. These are calling out the, in some cases, it's all of the residential parcels, but the, the landlocked parcels on the site. And so we're looking at those, not that any individual use is blighted, but that the. Irregular parcelization, these landlocked parcels meet that blighted open area by the state's definition. And then that allows the city or the redevelopment authority. To start working on some of these public improvements to support some of the private development. So with that, our next steps are of course, the October 14th meeting at 6:00 PM. It is Zoom. We are certainly hoping that we have plenty of people to join us. To look at the scenarios. As I said, they're being further developed tonight. So they will, what you see on the 14th will actually be more advanced. In terms of infrastructure and some of the other changes we've made than what I've shown you today as a preview. We're going to have online comments for the scenarios. If people can't join us, they'll be able to watch the meeting on their own or view the presentation. And then we'll have the scenarios in a little survey monkey so people can submit their comments for two weeks. And then we're going to be back to you on the third to really go through the full report in much more detail. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I'm impressed by this and actually glad that somebody is overseeing or watching our untapped. Land in the area. So I wouldn't have thought of something like that. I remember that theater when it was open way back when and. My dog's doggy boutique is over there. Been two dogs now. I've gone there for 20 years. So I drive by it often and it just sits there with trucks parked over there. So. This is hopeful.
I guess I have a question for you. Is the goal on Lyndale Ave to open up those back. Unutilized lots for residential? Is that what, you may have said that, but sorry, it may have been passed me.
Not at all. I'm just going to flip back there. And I'm flipping off screen. I don't make people dizzy. So with Lyndale Avenue, there's a couple of options. We've really been focusing the residential up here along Oak Street to match the, the multifamily on the other side.
We should say that it is mixed-use residential over retail.
Retail or restaurant, ground floor, residential, two or three stories above that, depending on the scenario we're looking at. Lyndale Avenue, we could see in a two or a three, maybe being opened up to support. You can see office lab here with parking or another office building here. One of the reasons this is put in a much later scenario is the topography changes significantly up here. It's got. Great visual access to Route 24. That's popular for office buildings. You only have to go down Route, the old parts of Route 128 in Waltham to see the corporate signs and how the visibility is really helpful. But like that area, it's very steep here. And so the market's really not going to allow for development in the short term. For offices there, but in the long term, we think it's possible and we want to show that as part of the vision.
So as Emily was saying, we are hoping to. Phase this over several years, both short and long-term goals are being established here. And the existing businesses that are on the site, we're hoping to incorporate them into the new redevelopment of the site. So. Madam Chair, you had mentioned your dog care facility. Certainly that's in a strip mall right now. It could move easily into. You know, in a second phase development that is, you know, a multi-use, multifamily with better visibility, I should say, on. On Oak Street, so.
That was one of the keys for us was could we accommodate the existing buildings onsite, the existing businesses, sorry, onsite if those buildings were moved. And so part of the exercise has been if we create these new buildings, would they be able to. Hold the existing buildings. So for example, those two red retail, our restaurant pads I showed you. One of those could be Tommy Doyle's and the other could be Frank's, for example. There's also a Chinese restaurant. They could shift around and maybe one's the Chinese restaurant, one's the other and something else. The third is in that mixed-use residential retail. Building, but there is the possibility of accommodating. As I recall from the numbers, we should be able to, in most scenarios, accommodate all of the businesses that are currently onsite. Elsewhere onsite. They seem to be serving the neighborhood. There's no reason for them to move unless they want to move. So there would be that space available for them.
Hi Emily, Jim Sweeney again. I do know there's a. I guess a gentleman's club in there. Is that, what, is that also in that plan to carry over? I mean, that's obviously an outstanding question.
Yes, my understanding is that it was recently revamped. It could, the space could be accommodated on this site. I think whether or not it's grandfathered use now is my understanding, whether or not that continues. Is probably partly a matter for zoning law as much as for the development, but. I'm sure the business owner will want to know whether or not it's possible for him to at least in square footage wise continue. And the answer would be yes to that.
I would certainly let the city solicitor take a crack at that first.
Yeah, but in terms of development square footage, the answer is yes. Beyond that, I can't comment.
I mean, I guess, you know, refacing that business might, you know, the public might have some questions.
I think that's a reasonable comment.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
I'm all set for now. Thank you for the presentation though.
Thank you. We do have a question from the audience that I'm going to state publicly so that we can have a record of it. And then we will answer it at the 14th, meeting on the 14th. And that is from Paul, wants to know if you relocate the restaurants, what will be the new price of the lots? Or the rents for those lots? And that is. Part of that pro forma development is what we're looking at right now. We hope to have more information about that in the very near future. So thank you, Paul, for attending and for your question. And with that, Emily, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Now continue with the rest of our agenda. So Madam Chair, we have two street acceptances, Roberta Ave and Harlan Terrace. I do not see a city councillor. Who's here to present those. Those are both in Ward Three. You should know that. We are a non-binding recommendation. You should know that we are a non-binding recommendation. And ultimately, it's up to City Council. But both of these streets, the planning department and the DPW don't feel would be problems if they were accepted.
Did you say Roberta Ave and what terrace?
Harlan, H-A-R-L-I-N.
Harlan.
Harlan, thank you.
No D's.
So, all right. So we need a roll call vote.
Well, we need a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor? Tony Gonzalez, yes. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
And we have two other projects. Again, that we have to continue, those are the return to ZBA. So our next discussion is the...
Excuse me, Mr. May, sorry to butt, jump in. Do we have to do the minutes from last meeting? Does that have to be?
That is a good catch, Larry. Thank you.
Look, I figured I'd get it out of the way now.
Well, you spend one meeting as acting chair and look at you.
Tony, me well.
So did we all have a chance? Well, I did. Did you all have a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Yes, from Tony Gonzalez.
Larry, is there something else I should bring up now or?
No, no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. May, can you just answer one of the butter's questions? Are they going to be notified about the rescheduled meeting date for these return to ZBAs? Is that something in the mail?
Meetings that are continued at the public meeting don't require new noticing. They'll be, it'll be on the meeting minutes, on the recording, of course, and also on the next agendas.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So who do we have for Cypress Drive?
Cypress, Azu, I am moving you up to a panelist. George Heikel, I'm moving you to a panelist. Is there anybody else who is on your team that I should be moving up?
Here's not.
I don't see anybody raising their hands at the moment. So Azu, if you turn on your camera and microphone?
Technical difficulties.
Azu, are you there? George, you have your hand up. Would you like to unmute your microphone?
Hey, Rob. Azu, wait there one minute. I just talked to you.
Okay. Apologies to those of you who are watching at home. And George, do you have two monitors, two microphones open right now?
Yeah, I'm gonna close one.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Laptop.
Ah, here he is.
Hi, Rob. Sorry, I was waiting, I was listening to the eloping presentation by your Harvard consultant. And then, not to give you TMI, but nature called on me, so.
Yes, that is TMI. All right then.
Thank you. So... Are we on to start now then?
Yes, yes, you may, sir.
Thank you. Am I able to share my files? Or are you sharing them?
Do you have yours?
Yeah, I can try if you give me the authorization to.
You should be authorized.
Okay. Is it showing?
George, Azu, let me share mine.
Okay.
Although... I'm having unstable internet.
Yeah, I think that's a... Okay, is that sharing right now?
Rob, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, for some reason, I can't grab that. There we go. Azu, does that work for you? I can't see what I'm looking at.
Okay, let me... Yes, yes, I can see that. Okay, great. All right.
Let me go back to your title page.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For record, my name is Azwad Tener, representing the applicant, George Heikel, and the owners of the land, Mr. Arthur Caspial-Poulos. And I represent my plant, my office, ET Engineering Enterprises, Inc., 481 Bedford Street in Bridgewater. Massachusetts. For the record, I'm the registered land surveyor, as well as the registered professional engineer responsible for the production of the documents by my ebull, ebull of associate Andy Sargent and Co. So, as you may recall, this project has, was originally filed back in 2000, winter of 2020. And then obviously because of COVID and everything else, it continued to get pushed forward. But then the planning board, as well as the conservation commission that we recently filed a notice of intent with, decided to retain an independent peer review consultant by the firm of Beta Group. And so we have the project. Rob, if you would, if you don't mind, my sheets consist of nine sheets. So if you could go screw up, okay, right there. So this sheet right here shows the existing conditions. Right up here, looking at the top of the page, will be the north. So Cypress Street will be to the north, Rockland Street will be to the west. 300 number, number 300, Rockland Street, and number 53 Cypress Drive are the two properties that have been combined. And so you can see the existing house right up to the, right up against Cypress Drive. That is number 53, and then number 300 is to the west. And so there is a wetlands, an existing wetland system located to the northeast, to the southeast of a subject property, but it's not actually in the property. Now, in the city of Brockton, the regulation extends the jurisdiction of the conservation commission to 100, from the actual wetlands area. And the conservation commission has a policy of requiring that any existing, any project be located at least 25 feet from the BVW. BVW standing for bordering vegetated wetlands. And so you can see on the existing land, the extended plants, the 25 feet and the 100 feet. Those little poker dots that you see, the dark spots that you see, and the test pits that we excavated at this site in order to determine the consistency of the material that we find, the in-city soils consistent with the Natural Resource Conservation Service map that characterize the soils in the area. And so the mapping that we did and the investigation that we did verify and do indeed corroborate the findings of the natural resource conservation. Rob, if you go to the next sheet, please, I would appreciate it. Okay, right there. So what you have is a four-lot subdivision, which includes obviously the two existing houses, the one at number 53 Cypress Drive and the one at number 300. Then we are creating two new lots. Again, under MGR Chapter 41L, the idea of a definite, of a definitive subdivision is that you are creating a new roadway for the purposes of gaining access to the new lots that you are creating, as well as providing the legal frontage for the purposes of zoning. So what you have is three, lot number one being the one at Cypress Drive. Rob, if you don't mind, if you do, if you would zoom into that, that might be helpful to me.
I hope I can zoom.
Okay, yeah, there you go. Okay, so basically, what we have is, so those four lots. And the house at number 300 Cypress, excuse me, 300 Rockland Street maintains its legal frontage on the street. That frontage doesn't change. The, it meets the necessary requisite setbacks. Nothing changes there. The lot area we have is 34,503 square feet. That land area exceeds the minimum requirement area for this district. It's in the R1C district. That we call lot number one. Lot number two will be the existing house in 53, at 53 Cypress Drive. Now, the required frontage that is prescribed for this area is 175 feet. The frontage that we are creating, while the zoning ordinance requires that if you are at a corner lot, you have to have the requisite setbacks. However, you need to demonstrate that you have adequate frontage at least on one road. You have in excess of 100 and, in excess of 200 feet of frontage on Evolix Way. So the new road that we are creating, it's called Evolix Way. Lot two will have well in excess of the required frontage on Evolix Way. But we are showing you by the dotted dash red lines that indeed it also conform to the minimum setbacks requirements for the, for the district. Then below that, between lot number two, which is the house on Cypress Drive and the house on 300 Rockland Street, will be number three. That lot also meets the requisite frontage and requisite area. The land space that we are creating for lot number three is 35,394 square feet. Just below lot number three is number four. That also has a requisite frontage as 35,655 square feet. You then go to three, Rob.
Next page?
Yes, sir, the very next page.
Sorry, your vocals are breaking up.
So, sorry about that. It's, you know, I have a poor audio quality on my laptop, combined with my accent. It makes for a Schwarzenegger accent. So, so what you have is the, what we call the grading. The grading sheet, it shows you all the proposed elevations. Shows you the required street, the street trees that we are respecting the 25-foot no-activity buffer zone associated with the wetlands resource. And for this project, we have two drainage basins, open drainage basins. The one will be almost sandwiched between lot number two and lot number three. And the purpose of that one is to capture your surface runoff from the existing abutting lands to the northwest of lot number three. So that we have runoff unimpeded being captured by this basin. And then it also captures a couple of catch basins on the cul-de-sac. And then from there, it goes southerly, southeasterly to another drainage basin located on the east side of Evolix Way. And so this drainage has been reviewed extensively. We went through two iterations, even though we stood by our work. However, because you, the board and the conservation commission hired an independent consultant to review it, we acquiesced to the recommendations. Because at the end of the day, those are the voices that the board and the conservation commission will listen to. And so kicking and they were pushing, we acquiesced to their requests and demands, if you will. And there were extensive reports and we addressed every one of those items to the letter. And they have stated as such. They have left a couple of items to the, one item that stands very clear. If you look at lot number three and lot number four, because we are creating two new house lots. We've also proposed what we call infiltration recharge basins on those lots to capture the runoff from the roof. So that if you look at lot number three, thank you, Rob, right below the proposed house on lot number three, you will see the infiltration basin specifically for that house. And then on lot number four, we've proposed a recharge structure to the east of the proposed dwelling. What Beta Group has left up to the board is to determine what the board will require that recharge, similar, similar charge pits be created for existing house number two and existing house number one. I don't believe that we need to, for the simple reason that we, for the simple reason that we are meeting the city's stormwater ordinance requirements as well as the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection regulations governing lot developments. regulations governing, um, uh, uh, lot developments. And so those existing houses, we're not changing their character, we're not adding to them. And so, uh, it will be rather, uh, what, uh, burdensome on those houses to require that they provide a roof, uh, recharge, uh, structures. Albeit, we already meeting the requirements of the regulations. So I would think that, well, we don't need to, uh, requiring that it will be more of a cosmetic requirement, it will not attenuate runoff beyond that which we've done. Now, the, the roadway has been designed one hundred percent in terms of traffic, uh, requirements and of paved width. Uh, the board, your regulations require that we provide a thirty-four foot wide traveled width of pavement. That's what we have done. It requires that we provide, uh, 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 a cul-de-sac, a paved area for vehicular traffic turnaround. We have done that. It requires that we provide sidewalk on both sides. We have done that. And it, and, uh, we have sewer. We're providing water, the blue line that you see in the middle of the road that is labeled PWU as basically the proposed water line. And then we have a hydrant right at the, uh, terminus of the cul-de-sac right between lot number, uh, three and lot number four. And then we have a gravity sewer connection to Cypress Drive. But that gravity sewer terminates just below lot number, uh, lot number two. And then we have what we call environmental pumps, E-one pumps, uh, physically ejector pumps for lot number three and lot number four. Those will eject, uh, sewage to the manhole uh, on Evolix Way, right by where it says test pit number seven. Where we did a test pit number seven in the middle of the road, uh, just below lot number two. And so, uh, when we went to conservation commission, uh, they had asked that we, uh, communicate with the planning board perhaps given that this is such a low volume, uh, subdivision, we only proposing two houses. Um, they, uh, conservation commission, uh, and I happen to agree with them, but that is not, uh, what I agree with the commission on that is, uh, relevant. Uh, this board is the, uh, regulatory authority vested with the, uh, uh, responsibility of determining whether a roadway meets, uh, its standards uh, for public safety, uh, in terms of fire apparatus getting there. Uh, this is being typical of what the planning board has required. And so we have demonstrated that we meet those requirements. Albeit, uh, from an environmental policy standpoint, uh, we would agree with the conservation commission that perhaps a reduction of the pavement width and, uh, perhaps elimination of the sidewalk on the east side of Evolix Way uh, would have served to reduce the runoff impact and allow for the drainage, uh, that drainage basin to be moved uh, westally and further away from the wetlands, albeit, albeit as it is designed and verified by your consultants. We meet both the conservation requirements and planning board requirements. However, again, from an environmental policy standpoint, uh, uh, I, I see the, uh, the, the, uh, consideration from the conservation commission. The other thing I want to point out to the board is that the whole pavement will be connected through catch basins runoff and routed to an environmental, uh, treatment unit. They call their stonemoster, which is one of the, uh, water quality units uh, approved by the DEP and I believe the city ordinance, uh, stormwater ordinance consistent with the MS four program does indeed, uh, acknowledge that, um, stonemasters, they are very good in clarifying runoff, uh, born oil and grease and trappings and sediments before they get into the recharge basins. So I will suggest that this project, uh, meets requirements, meets the environmental requirements. Uh, the one item, one specific item that we have from the inception of the application process, uh, one thing that we have consistently requested of the board because it's a hardship on the project, on the land is that we don't control the northeasterly, uh, end of our project. If you look on the westley end, uh, of the intersection, we are proposing uh, a radius, a property line radius of, uh, twenty, uh, thirty, uh, feet. But we are not providing the radius, the property line radius, and we are asking for a waiver. That is one waiver that we are asking for. It does not, and wh- wh- what needs to be pointed out, uh, Madame Chair and the board members, that radius requirement, we can still propose the necessary monumentation to define the right of way that we are proposing. The, the radius granting the waiver of the intersection property line radius, not the pavement radius, the property line radius, within that requirement does not by any stretch of imagination, not one iota, not one centilla, affect the operation of the roadway. The roadway as designed and configured based on the pavement requirements, sidewalk requirements meets and exceeds our, even the mass DOT highway division stand for intersections. We provide an ample intersection radar for the radar on both sides for the pavement. So it is the property line information that the board normally requires, but in instant application, within that requirement does not you know, derogate from the intents of your rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the city of champions. What I will also submit to the board recognizing that this board is not constituted as it was even a year ago. Never mind two years ago, three years ago, four years ago, five years ago. But I will submit to this present board that this, the, the planning board had historically in similar instances uh, granted waiver of that radius, really asking for one sideline intersection radius, which does not affect the operation of, uh, of the roadway itself. And so whereas, uh, the, uh, requiring of strict application of that requirement puts a undue burden on the land itself. As the board, not necessarily this board as it is presently constituted, has historically recognized in similar situations, waived that requirement. And there's an ample project example where that was done. And, uh, I, I lived in, in the great city myself for over twenty years. And I recognize those roads and some of those subdivisions I will submit to you, uh, uh, were done by my office. And those roads, uh, we don't have any accident data that suggests that oh, has the board waived their property line radius, uh, it, it created a hazard. No, that's not the case. And, uh, and incidentally, this is a very low volume, uh, very extremely low volume uh, traffic expectation from this subdivision. At Cypress Drive, it's a very good subdivision road. It's wide enough. It has a thirty-four foot wide wi- uh, thirty-four foot wide width as well as this. So, uh, I will pray this board to cons- uh, with the, uh, uh, information presented to this board that indeed, uh, granting the waiver for one intersection radius, property line radius uh, will not derogate from intent of your rules and regulations and will not, uh, uh, pose any trap or pedestrian hazard. And so I thank the board for indulging me, listening to me, and, uh, I will entertain any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Azu. Um, I will open this up, and I've seen this plan a couple of times before, and I can't speak to what other boards have, um, passed or not passed. I do want to go on record that Fire Chief Williams had to leave for a fire and he, um, left a comment, um, to go on record that he has an objection to the fifty-three Cypress ninety-degree corner. So just so that's on record.
Uh, he wa- I didn't hear that one, sorry, Madame Chair, that he what?
He has an objection to fifty-three Cypress ninety-degree corner. So he sees an issue with that being a safety, um, issue. So I wanted to read that onto record. Okay. And that issue was brought before us, the level before me, that my, well, the fellow board members are newer, but this issue was there and it's still here, and I just wish there was something you could do about that. Um, does any other board member have any other input?
I don't, I don't really have any other input on it, but, you know, based on what you were just brought up about that ninety-degree angle, I don't, I don't see any way they, they could make it anything different because it's a budding, you know, that neighboring lot, so. Um, I'm just assuming that Deputy Williams has an issue with it because of getting the fire apparatus in and out of there. That's the only thing I can see on that. Um, can we just look at the, um, the two new lots that you're proposing on the footprint? I'm just curious to know wh- what you're proposing for a, a type of home? I don't know if that's something you could answer, or maybe Mr. Heiko could. I'm just curious. Because they are strange-looking lots, but we've seen a lot of them in this city.
But the, uh, the, uh, I, if, uh, Mr. Heiko may chime in, but I do believe that we are looking at a colonial, uh, and that because those are footprints for the colonial residences.
Two single-family colonial homes.
Yeah. Madame Chair, uh, uh, um, I apologize that I was not, uh, privy to uh, that comment from Chief Williams, but, uh, I am totally flabbergasted because the, the intersection of pavements between the, uh, Evolix Way and Cypress Drive, uh, that pavement meets the intersection requirements. So the pavement itself meets your requirements. It's just a property line cutback, so, uh, even if we have that radius, it will not change. And that, and it's very important to note that. Uh, if you look at that, I've designed the way the, uh, radiant radar, we are providing intersection radar for the pavement, okay? So, uh, it defies logic to see, uh, how when the pavement, in intersecting pavement layout meets your requirements, we're just seeing property line cutback.
Yeah, um, Azu, so. He did put that, sorry, I didn't have a chance to read that. I didn't mean to swipe through, but he did put that in the chat during the presentation for Love It, uh, the previous presentation. Um, but this was, this issue was brought up to you before, and it's to my knowledge and my understanding, it does not meet the design requirements. It has to be not less than thirty feet tangent to the two lot lines. So it's not meeting requirements.
Right, but that does not, that's, that's, uh, and I agree with that, that's why we're asking for a waiver. And we have several numerous locations where that's been done, and it has not inhibited or prohibited access what, what the actual improved area, the actual improved pavement meets your requirements. It's what we are looking at in terms of, right? Because it, because, because, because in that layer, right, you are requiring trees. So if I were to put the trees that you're requiring in that radius area, well, how then, how then does not mitigate safety concern, if in fact there's a safety, right? Because you are not put, you, you are not going to be putting any improvement in that thirty-foot radius. The improvement that we are showing you meets your requirements. And so it, 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 it defies, it defies our logic to say that that would affect safety when in fact, if I were to put that, you would also require some, uh, uh, tree planting in that area. So that really blows my mind, but that's, you know.
I'd like to say a lot of work went into this plan, um, since the last time we saw, it was a year ago, I'm just guessing. A, a lot of work, the rest of it looks really good. Uh, with all due respect, you were aware of that concern because it is, as you started with, you know, announcing what our responsibility is, public safety. This was mentioned when we, we last submitted this plan to us. And it's the same, public safety issue is still there, so that's unfortunate.
You're right, you're right, Madame Chair, and, and I'll end with this, you're right. But if you recall, because I've, I've been party to this because of my responsibility. When we first came to you, our intersecting pavement, and you can look at that record, the intersection, the design of the pavement, didn't meet your requirements. This pavement does. I just want to put that out there. So yes, it was stated back then. But back then, we also not only requested a wave on the cutback radius on the property line, we were also requesting a wave on the pavement, and we're not doing that. That's all, and now, now, I'll leave that.
Thank, thank you for pointing that out, and I did acknowledge all the other work that went into this plan since the last time we saw that. Um, any other comments? Yes.
Madam Chair, um, and, and the, the document that's up on the screen right now really shows the, uh, difference between the thirty-foot, and I, can you see my cursor when I'm moving it?
No.
That's this different computer, okay? So on the left side of the screen, you see the thirty-foot lot cutback radius. Um, but on the right-hand side of the screen, you have a, you have a ninety-degree um, angle where the road connects with, um, the other lot. But you do have a thirty-foot pavement, whoops, sorry, uh, thirty-foot pavement, um, angle. And this is something that we've discussed back and forth with DPW and the, um, city engineer. Um, ad nauseam, um, you know, this, this requirement developed many, many years ago when we were trying to be a different kind of community. Um, you know, um, we do keep the pavement at, at fifteen degrees or at thirty degrees, but it doesn't meet the lot, um, uh, setback, um, for the radius, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, DPW and the city engineer have both said that we should not vary from that until the city standard is changed.
Okay, thank you for that, Rob. Any other comments from board members? If not, we'll open up to the public.
Oops, sorry, hang on, let me, I gotta stop sharing and, um, so if there are attendees who would like to discuss, um, please, at the bottom of your screen, you should have a, uh, the ability to raise your hand. And, uh, we'll recognize you if you have questions. So if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand or ask questions now. We can also use the Q and A function, uh, if you prefer to type your, um, questions in there. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone raising their hands at this time.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of this. And would any other comments or someone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, if I may, if you, normally we accept the plan um or reject the plan and but if we accept the plan, we then go and do um the waivers. But the waiver is incorporated into the plan, so if if you were going to reject the waiver, it is not possible to um accept the plan. Does that make sense?
Understood. Okay. Motion from a board member?
Motion to deny. Second.
Okay, all in favor to deny? Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. And sorry, Azu.
Thank you for your time.
Don, thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, so do don't, we obviously don't need to discuss the waiver and nothing else is on the agenda, so we ready to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second that.
All in favor? Yes, Larry?
Yes.
Yes. All right, good night, Mr. May. Good night, everyone.
Uh, thank you all, and remember the cases that got continued will be continued to November third. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.